Good evening and welcome to the Tuckahoe Village Planning Board Meeting. Would you call the role, please, Nancy?
Commissioner Nerrick.
Present.
Commissioner Barra.
Present.
Commissioner Gorman.
Present.
Chairwoman, Chairwoman.
Present. Our agenda for this evening includes 29 Elm Street, which is a site plan application, 173 Marbordale Road amended site plan, and 72 Main Street for site plan. We have to approve some minutes, so do we have a motion that the minutes be approved?
No move.
Okay. Would you take the role, please, Nancy?
I seconded.
Commissioner Nerrick.
Four.
Commissioner Barra.
Four.
Commissioner Gorman.
Four.
Chairwoman, Chairwoman.
Four. Okay, thank you. We will start out with 29 Elm Street.
Hello?
Yes, that's good.
My name is Carolyn Benitez. I'm the president of Little Chameleon, Inc. I am proposing to open my business at 29 Elm Street. My business is a retail establishment that is actually a slight deviation from the normal retail in that it is a buy-sell-trade business model. What that means is that the public will bring in actually two bags of their nearly new children's goods that maybe their child has outgrown, and they'll bring those to my store. Myself or other buyers will evaluate those products, and we will offer them, for the items that we can take, we will offer them either 30% in cash or 50% in store trade based on the resale value that we will ticket the items at. So for example, you bring in a $10 address that we will price as $10, you either receive $3 in cash or $5 in store credit, and that store credit is good for six months. You receive the cash on the spot that day. In addition to that, as you can see here in my architectural drawings, as you enter the space, there's the children's resale area here, there's an ADA compliant bathroom, there's a cashier and the reception, excuse me, a reception and cashier area here where we actually do the transactions, and while those transactions are happening, customers can continue to shop, or they can come over here to the waiting lounge. And in the waiting lounge, we offer all prepackaged, self-serve coffee and other beverages, and it's all cashless, self-checkout. So within this space as well, there's also an activity room where enrichment activities can be booked on a four or an eight-week sessions, and families are welcome to wait here too while their children are enjoying the activities. Those activities really range from everything from a mommy-and-me circle time to art classes for the older kids in the afternoons. The mornings are dedicated towards the children that are on the younger, from newborns through about five. I have five parking spaces. There will be an entryway painted so that you can clearly see the entryway to the business, and there's a second entrance as well coming through the vestibule here with an elevator up to pediatrician's offices on the second floor, or you can enter the waiting lounge and come around this way.
You have, maybe I missed it, but you had mentioned parties.
Ah, I apologize, yes, the parties. In addition to the enrichment activities that children can participate in, there are party packages that people can purchase. There are three different types. One is a DIY where basically you're renting the space, and with the space rental, you receive the waiting lounge as well as the activity room. There's a total of 36 people that are able to attend those parties. There's a door here that closes off so the retail area can still happen while those parties are going on. That's the first type of party that people can book. I'm not starting the other two types of parties until 2018 just so that I can get the business underway and really focus on the resale aspect of the business, but the other parties are something that I like to call my signature color party, and that is a monochromatic color where you come in for a free consultation, you pick the color out of the rainbow that you prefer, and then we do all the decorations in that color. So if you pick the color red, all of the decorations are in red, in all ranges of red. So everything from maroon all the way down to, say, a light red. And then the third party package would be a custom party. So say you come in and you say, "My son loves Thomas the Train." We do everything in Thomas the Train or exactly as you like. We set a budget with you, and then we throw the party accordingly.
So between the retail space and the party space, what's your typical hours of operation?
My hours of operation will be from 9:30 until 6:00 on Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays until 6:30, 9:30 to 6:30. Sundays were closed.
So the parties aren't separate from the retail?
Correct. There's three booking times on the weekends or on Saturday. The DIY parties, you can book on a Wednesday afternoon from 4:30 to 6:00, and a Thursday afternoon from 4:30 to 6:00, a Friday morning, or Friday afternoon from 4:30 to 6:00 as well. And Saturday, there's three times for those parties.
What are those times on Saturday?
I believe it's 10, yes, 10 until 11:30, 1 until 2:30. The reason why I'm hesitating a little bit is there's also 30-minute setup and 15-minute cleanup, so there's an additional 45 minutes the family has to actually...
But each party's about an hour and a half?
Exactly. And then the last party ends at 6:00 on Saturdays.
I'm just curious, how do you start with your inventory? Do you have an inventory?
I do have some inventory that I've pre-purchased, but I'm really excited for the public to be able to come in and actually sell to me. As I've been building out the shop and really getting things done, people have been knocking on the door. People are excited about it.
I'm sure there are a lot of people with the children's clothes they would love to get rid of.
Yes, people are very excited about the opportunity.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I was just wondering where the additional people are going to be inside because the activity room only showed about eight or nine.
Ten.
Or 10, but how we get to 32 or 35?
Here in the waiting lounge, there's actually 27 people that can congregate there. So really, the way that I've planned out the parties is the kids would actually eat here, tables would be set up for the children. The max of the actual party participants aside from caretakers is 10. So then in addition to that, there's two parents or two caretakers per child, and you've reached your max at 36.
Does that conform to what is appropriate?
I mean, it's up to the planning board. I just didn't see it laid out like that on the plan. I only saw the activity room for 10 people and figure a waiting room, but...
She talked about this at the work session, too. And if it's, the max is 10 kids, so that's assuming both parents are going to show up. I mean, that doesn't always happen.
Any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
No move.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I think you may need to open the public hearing on this one.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
The public hearing on this one, I think you have to open.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience here who would like to make comment or question? There being no one, we will then...
Make a motion.
We have a motion.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Close that. We have to close the public hearing. Motion to close.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty, and who would like to make that motion?
Who's got, you have it, I think, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so Apiclin is seeking to open a retail store specializing in children's clothing at 29 Elm Street, Tuckahoe. Appiclin is further seeking permission to offer children's activities and host children's parties out of said location. Pursuant to the regulations of SEACRA, this board finds that the actions taken herein in the unlisted actions subject to the requirements of SEACRA and its implementation, implementing regulations. Two, the board is in possession of all information reasonable and necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. And thirdly, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, congratulations. Good luck to you.
Well, no, she's got to read the second.
Read the second page.
Oh, okay, we have to prove the second page, fine.
All right. The following is the resolution decision of the planning board of the Village of Tuckahoe. Apiclin is seeking to open a retail store specializing in children's clothing at 29 Elm Street, Tuckahoe. Appiclin, applicant is further seeking permission to offer children's activities and host children's parties out of this said location. The location at 29 Elm Street provides parking for the business underneath the main building. We find based on the work session and the presentation at the public hearing that the applicant has met its burden as to 7-1 of the Village of Tuckahoe zoning code, and therefore the applicant is approved. The applicant shall adhere to the limitations as to the occupancy as set by the state code and the East Justifier Department.
Okay.
Every representation of the applicant made in his application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representation made shall be cause for the revocation of said approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have 72 Main Street. You can take it out if you wish.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. How are you?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I'm trying to basically, I'm from 72 Main Street, Cafe E42. Basically, what we're trying to do is be able to heat up our prepackaged sandwiches with two different methods. One's a turbo oven that places like Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks and Subway's like they use, it has the ventilation already in there, and all we're trying to do is just be able to place it into the oven and go about the appropriate way in order to do this.
Is there any other information you'd like to share at this point?
No.
Okay.
Maybe you want to say the name of your shop?
Yeah, Cafe E42.
E4, but it's E4...
E4 colon.
Colon 2, yeah. So it's essentially the same business that's been there?
It's exactly the same.
Same business, and you're legalizing the...
Correct. I want to do things the appropriate way.
No, that's a good idea.
And right now, you serve, it's a restaurant, or you'll just elaborate on what is existing now?
Okay, so we do coffees, espressos, we have prepackaged sandwiches, but they do come in cold, and we have pastries. Our pastries are delivered every day from Reinbeck, New York. We use everything local, so we use all local suppliers from Westchester and... Okay, thank you. We use all local suppliers, and right now, we're just really, we're having issues selling cold sandwiches, you know, and I feel it's a crucial part to our operation to be able to serve hot sandwiches, especially since like winter is coming, and you know, most of our, we've been on our soft-open period this last two weeks, and we've been taking recommendations from the, from the community and seeing what they like, and you know, they really are interested in having hot sandwiches.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Yes.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make comment? There being no one in the audience who wishes to make comment, we will then ask for a, we will...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second, I need a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
A SEACRA resolution. Pursuant to the regulations of SEACRA, this board finds that the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SEACRA and its implementing regulations. This board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. That the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. The second part of the resolution? Second page?
Oh, we need a vote.
On each one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Nerrick.
Four.
Commissioner Barra.
Four.
Commissioner Gorman.
Four.
Chairwoman, Chairwoman.
Four. Okay.
The following is a resolution decision of the planning board of the Village of Tuckahoe, New York. The applicant is seeking to implement a new kitchen plan to utilize a panini press and turbo chef oven in his cafe located at 72 Main Street. We find that based on the work session and the presentation of the public hearing that the application has met the standards of 7-1 of our zoning code, and therefore, the application for a new kitchen is approved. Every representation of the applicant made in his application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representations made shall be cause for the revocation of said approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good luck.
Good luck to you.
By the way, I loved your sign.
Thank you so much.
I saw it yesterday. It's a really nice sign.
Okay. Alrighty, and our next applicant is 173 Marbordale Road.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. David Barbuti, architect, representing Broken Bow Brewery. We're here tonight for site plan approval and ultimately, special use permit from the zoning board. We're here tonight because we have a few proposals to modify the existing site. One is which to expand the existing outdoor seating area, which will encompass two existing parking spaces, which will bring the total of proposed parking spaces on the site from 14 to 12. Would be another part of this is the provision of a approval of a food truck on-site, and the last would be permitting a tent in the parking lot. There's only been one previous tent event, but the brewery has, they have special events that are requested by multiple civic organizations throughout the community. They have asked for tents, but none have ever set any up. So they did have one wedding, so this was the perfect opportunity to come in front of the board to request setting up a tent in the parking lot. That would take up or take away a few spaces while the tent is up. The brewery has secured an agreement with the neighbor, Rocco, next door, that any parking that is required, he'd be able to park in their lot on times they have special events. So that's been...
Do you have an agreement? Do you have a lease?
There's a written agreement, I think it's in your package that they both agreed, and I think Mr. Lamott could elaborate on that, but I believe there is a written agreement for that.
What is to prevent, if there's a sale of Rocco's property or his business, what prevents the new owner from saying, "I will not agree to this any longer"?
That is a good question, and I will have to defer that to Mr. Lamott. I would assume that there should be something in writing that there should be some sort of paperwork that goes to the new owners. There would have to be an agreement there.
That's why I think there needs to be a lease in place so that that's guaranteed.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit why you're going to the zoning board?
Okay, so the zoning board, the outdoor events are basically triggering the special use permit. Previously, when there's a special event, they go to the village board, the applicant or the people that want to do the event, they go to the village board for the special use permit, and in order to alleviate that multiple times, we're going to the zoning board basically for a one-shot deal. So if there's anything, it's under one basically umbrella.
Got it. And could you talk about the wedding a little bit? You know, how long was it? Where were people parking? Was it an issue? And I know you talked about you had some policemen there that you hired. Could you talk a little?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Lamott because he was there.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Specific to the question, I believe the attendance was 130 to 150 people total. The building itself, we are approved for 82 inside occupancy. The tent itself is mapped out on the map. The wedding started, well, it wasn't a wedding, it was a reception, started at, I believe, 6 o'clock. It closed, all music stopped at 10:00, and then cleanup commenced from there, and I believe everybody was gone by 11:00, everyone, including me. So in terms of parking, a lot of the guests actually arrived via railroad. Quite a few came in groups. There was enough parking for six or eight of the cars in the lot post the tent itself. The fact that it was later on a Saturday evening, I am sure some of the cars were parked in the street, but it, there were not, there was, there was no congestion visible to me. The police that were involved followed exact village protocol, as the bride and groom got necessary permits, the police told them however many officers were required, they complied. So all of those details, the tent, the approval with the fire department for the tent to make sure it was right, the police, that was all handled by the bride and groom.
So now, if you get, if you get the special permit from the zoning board, how does it work as far as, is this laid out? What, say, a bride and groom come to you, and do you have, do you present them with the list of, the checklist of what they have to do, or do they have to come to the village and get that checklist? How does that work? I'm trying to figure it out, how that would work.
That's exactly the question, I think, that brings us all here this evening.
Yeah.
At our root and our daily activity, we are a brewery. That is our intent, we brew beer. With the public, including this bride and groom and other civic organizations, what it had figured out is that this is a nice space to hold events if we're interested. We've only had one tented event, but any time that a group comes to us, whether civic, private, with the idea of, "We'd like to have a private party," if it is more than 50 people, that's our rule, we consider that a sell-out, if you will, that's, so the place is closed, and all 50 can be housed right in the building, which is the reason we've never had a tent before. This party exceeded that, but in, on any instance, whether it's been the firemen, policemen, EMS, chili cook-off, or any of those kinds of things where the parking lot is involved, we've told all groups they need to go to the village to get the necessary permits, and so we've never really been involved in that, but we, we say, "You must comply with whatever the local code is, or we cannot do this." So after the tent came up, we were approached by members of the village, said, "We need to simplify this because groups come to us, we need to get your parking lot rezoned, we need to do this right," so that we're, you know, it's not always on a one-off basis. Let's do this properly. That's what brings us here this evening, but we have not been involved in the execution of whatever needs to happen. We simply say that whatever has to happen, you have to comply, or you can't have your event at Broken Bow.
So Gary, the process would still be the same. They basically, they would say, "You have to go to the village and get the proper permits," but the only step that's missing is the approval step.
Well, no, I don't think, I think we're trying to, or what's going to happen is eliminating the village boards approving each event.
Exactly.
So they would be operating under a special permit that encompasses what they're allowed to do, and I think it's up to this board and the zoning board with the special permit, if they're inclined, is to put restrictions on what can and can't happen there so Lyle knows the box he can work within.
Okay, so say we approve everything, and
Right.
we have, there's a checklist of things they have to do, you know, get police, you know, at the event, you know, if it's a wedding outside, hire a couple policemen outside, whether it's, I don't know, what else is in there, the tent, you know, the measurement, everything. Who, who is going to be making sure that that's followed?
Well, that's an enforcement issue of the village. That would be our code enforcement agent would be Mr. Williams, Police Department.
But so no one has to come here to the village and say, "We're having a party at Broken Bow, and we're going to put up a big tent," and nobody has to do any of that?
Correct. But again, again, I think the restrictions are, you know, hey, you can only go at 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock, or whatever it is, but yes.
No, I'm just trying to get the process in my head of what...
What they can do, what, you know, what the hours are,
Right.
how many people, where it is.
Yeah.
So the tent is a temporary tent only for any given weekend, for argument's sake, or given venue?
That's, you know, the restriction, you know, how long does the tent stay up? These are all issues that I think this board and the zoning board are going to need to think through, so Lyle knows what he can and can't do down there, and that's kind of...
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to see how a person who might want to do this, what they have to be thinking about.
Well, only because the people who are having the event aren't coming forward and getting their permits. The wedding did not have a permit signed off on by the fire department. They never signed off on it.
Okay.
They never came forward to ask for it. Your daughter's the one that brought in the paperwork, so they were never involved. What we're trying to do is eliminate all of who's doing what, when, where, and how.
Right.
Because they're hosting the events through the brewery, we just assume that they get the approval to hold these events throughout the year with the tent, so that whatever needs to be done has already been approved, whether it be a cabaret license for the music or the parking off-site somewhere else, all be taken care of before any events happen. So there won't be a running around of, "I need a permit for this." They're going to be granted a site plan approval to put a fire-rated tent on that site 52 Saturdays out of the year, if that's what they want to do. It's going to avoid all this paperwork and who's doing what to hold these events.
Simplifying, in other words?
Absolutely. So that whatever event comes forward to them, they can host it and have it at their brewery.
And just to clarify, they're here for really three
Right.
changes.
Right.
The tent is one of them.
One.
And the food truck.
Yeah, I wanted him to talk a little bit about the food truck, too.
And then, yeah, and then obviously the expansion of the patio. So you really got to take those, each issues, and, and figure out, you know, what this board's inclined to do.
Right.
And before we move off the tent
Right.
and to the other issues, if I may... and to the other issues, if I may, with regards to the hours, certainly, we're going to, whatever provisions, that's what we'll live within. But our mission, again, is to brew beer and to distribute beer. So the brewing of beer is an early process, like a bakery process. So we've never had a party that went past 11:00, even on the inside. We've had one tent in four years. We've probably had three or four requests. They've all been civic groups, so one of the times it comes to mine's Community Fund, Eastchester. I think the Chamber of Commerce checked into it once. But it's very expensive to have a tent. So the tent is, I mean, I can't imagine the party that would do anything other than the bride and groom, which is it goes up midday that one day. It's up, the party happens, it's gone. Because I think they paid $5,000 or something for this tent. That's, I wouldn't want to pay $5,000 a day for a tent that was empty. So we have no desire to go to 2:00 in the morning or any of those kinds of things. We are an early business, but we have this facility that people have come to view or imagine as a place, because there is a parking lot, because it does hold 82 people inside, that maybe we might have a birthday party or whatever the event is. We have a lot of birthday parties on the inside. Most birthday parties don't have 82 people at them. So Saturday, we had the, a fundraising event for the Food Bank of Westchester. But it was an inside affair. And, and I, no tents, no. So I think each year, we have used the parking lot without tent, and only in the afternoon, and only on the weekend, for three or four events each year. Most of them have been civic. The one exception has been each year, there's Craft Brewing Week, our industry. We have one day that the whole industry has, where we celebrate it. There's been a local restaurant involved each time. And other than that, it's whatever private party has done, you know, whatever event. But one tent, four years.
And you really still want to maintain it, as you're the brewery, and if somebody wants to use it, they're gonna do the legwork. The tent, you know, getting police officers, getting fire, you don't really want to be doing that.
Yeah, very much, and I completely agree with Bill, that, you know, if we can just simplify to, you know, what is the process? What, you know, if somebody wants to go through this, what does the village allow? And then there's no guesswork. And, but I think in most instances, we've been very good about, "You need to go to the village if you want to do this, and ask them what's required, because we're a brewery." And if you get those permits, then, okay, if it's okay with the village, it's okay with us. And within the hours, that's the reason they all stop in the evening.
I have no problem with it. It's a function, who they go to to get the permits.
What is your thought on this, you folks, I mean?
I just think that the site plan, if it's granted, would allow him, whether the events are inside or outside, to hold these events. Wouldn't have to keep coming back in for any permits, other than if they put up the temporary tent, that would need a permit, approval by the fire department, because we know it needs to be Class 1. And that would allow him to do whatever events he wants to do throughout the year for whatever civic group it is.
Now, who sets the parameters of this, us or zoning?
Well, it's actually both of you.
Do we need
You can put restrictions on them, they may have tighter restrictions.
So then, which ones do we go by?
Whichever of the more restrictive ones.
Okay.
But I think, you know, they would need to watch this and understand your ideas and what your recommendations would be for the special permit. But if site plan says, hey, you can't go past 9:00, and the special permit says you can't go by past 10:00, it's 9:00 o'clock, it's the more restrictive one, in my opinion.
Okay. Just so people know out there, we're not voting on anything tonight, because this takes a little more discussion, but
Right, there are a lot of issues here.
Yes.
There's three different things, it's complicated, it's
Right. And this allows people who are at home, maybe watching this, they can come to the next meeting and voice any concerns, or maybe even some restrictions that we didn't think of, which would be helpful.
Sure.
I think also would cover any amplified music that they would want to have throughout the year, that they would be granted disapproval, so that they don't have to keep going back and forth. You know, three weeks from now, there's gonna be somebody in there that's gonna want some, they have to apply. Seven weeks later, there's someone else that approaches them and wants to have some there, they would have to apply. This is gonna eliminate all those steps and headaches, and allow them to hold the events.
Yeah, I completely agree, and it, just the clarity will help. Because that's virtually what we tell everyone without definition, which is whatever the village says you're allowed to do. And then we put our cap on it, which is, "But we're closed at 10:00."
Right.
Or we're closed, and we are closed at 10:00. When the couple of events have gone to 11:00, they paid for more. I remember there was one instance, somebody wanted to go to midnight, we said, "No, we're just, no. We're back at 6:00 in the morning, we can't, we're not doing that." So the definition will help a great deal. And, and that's, you know, I think that's the goal. But this discussion this evening triggered the additional topic was, which, you know, Bill suggested, was, and Gary, which is, as long as you're here, what else in the next five years might you want either board to think about, so that you're not constantly every other year in front of the board? Let's just make it easier on everybody.
Makes sense.
And that's what leads us to the other two.
Can you talk about the food truck?
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to. So we've been blessed, and I'm gonna say that's the right word, to be here open now for four years in August. We're in our fifth year. We have
By the way, can I just, we love having you here, you've been a great asset to the village.
Well, thank you very much, we love being here, we really do. And it's kinda neat in early morning hours to wave hello to the same people that are going up and down the street from the fitness or going to work or what have you. But we, in the four years, because we're concentrating on brewing, which is not, you know, we're not trying to be a restaurant, try to do other things. I'm very proud to say, in very unusual and early form, we've won a couple of national awards for our beers. We've earned a host of regional and state awards for the beers. So we concentrate on something. And at every step, we proudly announce we're members of Tuckahoe. It's on all our cans, all of our labeling, all of everything. So as a natural byproduct of that, with breweries versus brew pubs, there are 4,000 breweries in America, 4,500. Less than 1,000 are breweries. The others are brew pubs, where they brew a beer, and you only find it at their brew pub, and they serve food. We fall into the camp, although a drop, of Budweiser, which is a brewery, that's what they do. And I'm sure they have other arms that do restaurants and things, we don't have those arms, we brew beer. So over the next, you know, five years, I mean, that is our goal, to continue to brew the beer. So 75%, I mean, on day one, 100% of our business happened on Marble Dale Road. If you walked in, we had no accounts, you bought a pint, that was all of our business. Today, 75% of our business happens away from us. It happens between the city, all the way up to Albany. And, and, you know, it'll continue to grow. But that tasting room has become a magnet, which is what they do, just like a winery, for people that come in from, virtually, we have had visitors from every state, and from a couple dozen countries now. They have a little pin in the map, they stick it in the brewery. And when they're in Tuckahoe, whether they come up Metro North, or, you know, however they get here, you know, we feel like we're sort of an ambassador of the town. Over the next, but when they come here, one of the staples of a brewery, not a brew pub, anywhere else they go, including Long Island, including down in Brooklyn, Bronx, and north of here, unless you're a brew pub, is, are these gourmet food trucks. You've seen them on food channels. They concentrate on beer, so the food comes in. And we're not talking about just the normal industrial food trucks, we're talking about really cool food. It's just part of the industry. So from local citizens that go to breweries elsewhere, to anyone else from anyplace else that comes in and visits, we're probably asked 50 times a week, "Where are the food trucks?" And I, personally, it would really help me, in terms of I won't have to answer the same question 50 times. But I also think it won't compete at all. We want and will continue to tell everyone, all the menus from any restaurant that wants to deliver in town or in our vestibule, they're right there. So any restaurant will continue, bring in your food. If somebody wants to bring Tupperware from home, bring it in. But for the folks that want to have the Walters Hot Dog Truck, or the whatever truck, gourmet truck, if they're allowed, if the trucks are allowed to come into the parking lot, not on the street, I think it would bring a nice aspect to the business, for sure. But I also think it would be a terrific reflection on the community, it's just something they expect. And many of the requests we receive are from citizens of the town. In fact, the two, I think we've had a food truck three times. And two of the three times, they have been from civic groups in Tuckahoe. I think one of them was Chamber of Commerce. And so it's in line with expectation of our industry. The last thing I would add is that oftentimes, for our license, we're only mandated and only offer, you know, like pretzels and potato chips in bags, this kind of stuff, state licensing. I don't know if somebody brings Tupperware, I don't know if they order their food from Pulpitinas, or the Quarry, or Tucked Away, or who brings it in. But if I know the truck is there, then I know they have access to food, and I think that helps with safety a little bit, too.
I agree.
So I think it's a good thing, all the way around. And if we were approved, we are only open to the public Thursday through Sunday. Sunday, we actually close at this point at 5:00. So we're constantly asked to open, stay open till 6:00 or 7:00. But we open early on for brewing beer on Monday, so I can't imagine it's gonna go much later than that. So that would be the food truck. The last request
Wait, back on
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Back on, so you would want the food truck Thursday through Sunday?
Well, we really only have crowds on Friday and Saturday. Thursday is, you know, some traffic. Sunday, we have some, but by dinnertime, we're closed. But I've, I've been, I've received advice from every corner that if you're going to ask for Friday and Saturday, just ask for Thursday through Sunday and be done with it, and don't come back again.
Yeah.
As much as I'm sure you all like to see me, this would be it. We used to be open Wednesday through Sunday, we stopped being open to the public on Wednesday, because we're brewing more, so.
And this would be rotating food trucks kind of idea, like different food, maybe different
Yeah, I, well, personally, if approved, I think it would be very interesting, again, for citizens. It's just, it's a very social thing, these food trucks, so we can ask even the customers that do come in, "Who do you want?", and, but gourmet.
Right.
So if you qualify for that level, I would think a rotating type menu, yes.
Sounds like a good plan.
Bill, what's your take?
It was our suggestion.
Oh, the food truck?
Well, because, yeah, I mean, people who go to the brewery generally want something to eat.
What restrictions do we have to get? Do the restrictions on the tent to be approved by the fire department, or what restrictions?
No, I think once there's an approval set up here, zoning, and then through the building and the fire department, it'll be one approval. So if five times throughout the year, they're gonna bring a tent in, we know the size of the tent, we know it's a Class 1 material, so it's gonna be taken care of. So it's not like every time a tent comes up, we need a new application. We know that there may be five, 10 events throughout the year that's gonna require that, and they're gonna know what they need to put up.
But we would set, and the zoning board would set the size of the tent, how long it can stay up, the hours, they can have the event until, we would be setting that up.
Because there's an occupancy with the tent size, correct? So there's only so many people that are allowed in the parking lot?
I don't think we've ever run into a problem with the number of people. Just the limit to the size of the tent, based on the area in which you can set it in, and its relationship to the building, property lines, and things of that nature.
Number three. So number three, again, you know, I was asked, "What else in the next five years, so that you don't keep showing up every other year?" The only other thing I could come up with, and it would not be immediate, but I would foresee it being maybe next summer, next spring, or the spring after. Would be, we have a beer garden, it is not a covered, structured thing. It's literally, it's cobblestone in the parking lot, it's a very pretty space now, the plants have come in nicely. Where if we went from what was two parking spots to four parking spots, double the size of it, we have five picnic tables, I believe it's on Dave's map. If we went from five to 10, we would take care of, you know, obviously, planting the various plants and things like that, all to specification. But it's become a very nice and green and kind of peaceful place in the middle of, you know, an industrial avenue. It is popular. People like to sit outside in the northeast when it's warm, and it's been a popular thing this summer. But it's only open when we're open, and it's closed when we're closed. And, and that was the only other thing I could come up with. We don't have any designs on, you know, covering the structure or anything like that. It's a simple table with an umbrella. We have a green theme to our brewery, we've won various environmental awards. Cool thing about the five picnic tables we have is you can actually plug your phone or your computer right into the pole, because it has a solar panel on top of it.
Oh, yes.
So we'd get five more of those guys. No need for gazebos or any of that other kind of stuff. That's, so double the size of it, which would take us, I think, from 16 to 14? 14 to 12 parking places. We very, very rarely, that I'm aware of, have anybody that is, I mean, the parking lot is not normally and a tremendous amount of the traffic we get are from people walking in, from the neighborhoods around. I think probably on Saturdays or Sundays, maybe in the weekend, there might be some, a couple of cars parking on the streets, but at that time, the businesses in the area are closed. We are open Thursday to the public from 5:00 to 8:00, which, again, a lot of the businesses are closed, other than the gym. And Sunday, we're open from 1:00 to 5:00.
I have no problem with it.
Now, I asked you at the work session if you had a priority list.
Yes, yeah. My priority of all of it would be the food truck. I like the safety aspect, I like the, you know, the cultural, social aspect. I think it might also bring a nice additional crowd up from the city on Metro North, or from around to Tuckahoe, and when they're here, they might shop at other stores and things in the area. But I like the fact that there would be additional food on-site that way. And I have no intention to put in a kitchen, because it's a whole different business. So that would be the way to do it. I also would like to mention that every time I say "food truck", I want to make sure that anybody watching this evening that may own a restaurant, I'm not saying food truck from elsewhere.
Right.
It could be a food truck from town, as long as it's a gourmet kind of a food truck and interesting. I'm not looking to exclude, just based on quality.
Almost an extension of a restaurant in town.
Sure, and, you know, if you came to Broken Bow on Monday morning, and you wouldn't want to do this, but if you opened up the dumpster and you looked inside, you'd probably guess whether we were a pizza restaurant, or whether, what we were, because of all the boxes and things. So the restaurants are doing well with the traffic. And I don't think that that would, I, I don't think one precludes the other. I think it's a different audience.
Right.
What's our next step, Gary?
Well, you've heard the presentation, you can wait to open the public hearing the next time. There's no one here, so
Right.
you could probably just, you know, think about it, you've heard, there's a lot to digest. Think about what, you know, conditions you may want to put on this. I think you're going to the zoning board in October? Which is before this meeting.
Yes.
So, you know, I could bring them up to speed with what questions you had. I don't know which direction you're headed in yet, but, you know, we'll be discussing with the zoning board. And that's it, just, you know, let it progress and think of what you want to do.
October eleventh.
Do we have to open the public hearing now?
I don't think you have, they could, you could open it now, just carry it, if you would like to do that. There's no one here, but it's formality, you can do that and just carry it to the next meeting. Get it open and
Okay, I make a motion that we open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second public, who would like to make comment? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone in the audience? There is no one other than the presenter and his company man. So
Make a motion to carry it to the next meeting.
Close the
To carry it.
Not to close it.
To carry it to the next meeting.
Oh, to carry it over to the next meeting, yes, absolutely.
So I second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do we have any other business that you would like to bring up at this point? Anyone?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening.